Well, welcome everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate you coming to the District Four City Council Candidate Q and A and Meet and Greet. My name is Martin Ricks. I'll be your moderator tonight. Five individuals have declared their candidacy for District Four. They are Kevin Allred, give a little wave, Darrell Finn, Heather Garcia, Stephen Shields, and Heather Sudwigs. Heather Sudwigs couldn't be with us tonight. She recently had a baby and she's taking a few days off to recover, spend some family time, good quality family time before she starts actively campaigning. So she sent an email out this evening wishing all the other candidates good luck and she will engage with the community in just a little while. I just wanted to thank you all, candidates, for your willingness to serve and for your willingness to be here tonight. Why don't we give them all a round of applause? Just a couple of quick notes on the structure of tonight's meeting before we hear from the candidates. Since we have five candidates in the race, four here tonight, and only an hour for Q and A, candidates will each have two minutes to answer each question. I've provided a few initial questions to the candidates in advance. I may have a follow-up question or additional question here and there, and then, time permitting, we'll turn the time over to the audience for any additional questions. Since this is meant to be more of a meet and greet rather than a formal debate, candidates will not have the opportunity to rebut any other comments. For the sake of time, I'd just ask that we hold any applause until the end of the Q and A. The candidates have agreed to stick around and meet with everyone, mingle for a little while afterwards, so please feel free to take the time afterwards and get to know your candidates. So now, let's get to know them. First question, we'll begin with Steve. Please tell us briefly about yourself and what motivated you to enter the council race. Please include what involvement, if any, you have, you've previously had in Harriman City politics or government. Steve, why don't you lead us off? Steve, if you'll, go ahead and stand up at the microphone.
Okay, review. My name is Steve Shields. I've been here for six years. I have five children. My wife Lindsay and I are raising them. We have a 21-year-old, a 19-year-old, a 17-year-old. The two oldest graduated from Harriman. My third will be a senior next year. Then I have an eight and a six-year-old that are both attending Athlos Academy. I have worked primarily in banking and financial services for the past 25 years. I've been in Utah, currently employed by a bank based in Kentucky, and received my MBA from the University of Utah. My father was in the Air Force growing up, so I lived all over the United States, from Biloxi, Mississippi, to Cheyenne, Wyoming, to Southern California and parts in between. But moved to Utah about 25 years ago when my father got a job as a professor at Salt Lake Community College. In the 20 years I've been here, I've spent a lot of time in public service, served as a president of a fraternity, a service fraternity, spent two-term as chairman of the Honoring Heroes Foundation, countless hours in public service fundraising, Children's Miracle Network, a lot of those kind of things. Spent more than a dozen seasons coaching youth sports in and around the city. So the question is, why running? About 18 months ago, when the Olympia Hills thing was going, it kind of caught me off guard. I wasn't prepared for that type of development to be hitting in our backyard without me knowing about it. And I felt it was really important at that time to become engaged. My engagement led me to this point where I felt it was really time to step up and volunteer my services for the city.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Heather?
Hello, and thank you all for being here tonight. I'm glad that some of you came out to support all of the candidates. My name is Heather Garcia, and I was motivated to run for city council because as a resident and business professional, I want to ensure that our city continues to be fiscally responsible and that we focus on economic development to build a broader tax base. I would also like to work on creating more open space for our growing communities and families. I have a master's degree in business administration and a bachelor's degree in political science with an emphasis in public policy. I also have certificates in project management and risk management. I am happily married with three incredible children. I am currently involved with Harriman City Government as a planning commissioner. This is a citizen board appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. As a planning commissioner, it's my duty to provide analysis and recommendations to the city council on matters dealing with the present and future development of the city. This includes reviewing, approving, and/or recommending to the city council for requests for general plan amendments, zone changes, subdivision, and land use ordinance amendments. As a planning commissioner, I've had the opportunity to get to know the incredible staff at Harriman. They are all very educated on subject matter within their departments. I interact with the mayor, the city council, the city manager, the assistant city manager, planning, engineering, legal, and economic development.
Thank you, Heather. Kevin?
Kevin Allred. I graduated from Pleasant Grove High School, so I've been in Utah for quite a while. My background comes from coaching. Been an athlete and coached athletes for a long time. I helped start a gym line here called Boss of Fitness, and recently moved full-time into the real estate, the real estate side. The reason I got into this is I've always had a strong feeling, a strong desire to serve. And what I love about this opportunity is that we're at a unique crossroads as a city. There's been some things that have happened that may have been out of our control. There's some things happening now that are within our control, and I think it's important now to really seize the moment and help us as a city grow, and most importantly, leave a legacy. I believe in smart, sustainable development, economical development, and I believe in we've got to take care of what we've got and leave it, leave things better than we found it. I've got three beautiful girls. They are my world. I've got two dogs, and they're my hiking buddies, and we enjoy this canyon and these views as often as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Darrell?
Good evening. My name is Darrell Finn. I'm a local to Utah, born and raised in Rose Park, which is just north and west of downtown Salt Lake. We have been living on the top of the Cove for about a year and a half now, so I'm familiar with the other parts of Harriman for quite a while. I'm married. My wife's name is Wendy. I have three kids, boy, girl, boy. The two boys are serving in the military, Air Force, and Army, and Mom and I couldn't be prouder of them. We have five grandkids, one on the way. They're all here locally in this valley, which wasn't true a year ago, but they are now, so we're enjoying life once again. As a resident of the Cove, really, I have a vested interest in preserving our culture of ease and comfort. And that's the culture that we have become known for in Harriman, but I have seen recent changes that have put a burden on that culture that we've enjoyed. Specifically, as a citizen of Harriman, I've already witnessed and been part of the increased traffic congestion. As an owner of a local consulting, engineering, and surveying firm, I know the stress that that puts on public infrastructure, capacities and volumes, that growth burden, and tax all the other citizens. Why am I running? Well, on a simple platform of applying 40 years of experience with local governments, coupled with my skills in consulting, I think that all goes to mitigate the issues that I've mentioned, and I look forward to being a city councilman for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Okay, Heather, we'll have you lead off this question, this next question. For many Harriman residents, there's, to a degree, a lack of trust in our city's officials. Some of the issues that are cited sometimes are questionable decisions with developers, potential conflicts of interest, allegations of a good old boy network, and other potential ethics issues. What is your plan to restore citizens' trust in government to ensure that the city is operating ethically and looking out for the needs of the average Harriman resident?
All right, so it's my opinion that people in general have a difficult time trusting any government. This isn't only a local issue, but it's an issue that we see across America in all levels of government. My plan to ensure that the city is operating ethically is to be transparent through an open government, which will rebuild our citizens' trust. It is also imperative to have strict policies, procedures, and trainings to ensure that everyone is aware of the rules. I would also like to create a system for reporting unethical behavior. When I was in graduate school, one of the classes that I took was on ethics. It allowed me to assess my standards and determine that I have a high level of ethical standards. The problem is, not everybody does. I believe that any potential conflict of interest is, in fact, a conflict of interest. I know that Harriman City has worked hard over the years to be more transparent to its citizens. I promise that I will be ethically sound, transparent, and not afraid to be a voice when I see an ethical issue.
Thank you, Heather. Kevin?
Yeah, I think she's right. You know, there's a lot of transparency things that need to be fixed. I also think there's a level of engagement that needs to be increased. You know, I felt in the first question, I am part of the Be Ready Harriman Committee. That's a committee that I felt was in dire need since we, because of the growth, we had no sustainable plan. And I don't want to be caught with their finger in the dam if we have another fire, earthquakes, or something of that nature. So the transparency is definitely important. I think there's a level of engagement that needs to be accelerated from our city. You know, who has more effect on our city, the President of the United States or our city council? Our city council has more impact on our lives than anything else. The government's there to protect the people, and by protecting the people, we need to be engaged with the people. I think it's important to be out in the community, be in the schools, be in these situations where people can know us, know who we are, know what we stand for, and not just have lip service. You know, see them working with each other, see us talking to the youth, you know, being in the skate park when there's issues, things like that. I think that's the biggest way that you remove distrust is by being engaged with the people that you're supposed to serve.
Thank you. Darrell?
Well, I think the question implies that all residents have problems with city governments. That's probably not true. You can't go one extreme or the other. I think perhaps a better way to state this is that some are wary over the motives and decisions made by city governments. That is probably due to a lack of understanding or a lack of engagement, as Kevin has used. Engagement is probably the best way to create accountability in government. Instead of a few voicing concerns over actions, it would be better if many became engaged in citizen government, in local governments, in Harriman City. All citizens should have an active voice, and we can see by the volume in this room, not all citizens are engaged. So I think one issue cities will have is encouraging the citizenship to become involved. Our city's standards and codes are not bad. I've seen these standards, these codes throughout the Intermountain West, and Harriman's are spot-on. They're not bad codes. It could be the application of those codes or standards. The zoning requirements, the city's master plan works if applied as thought-through and planned-out. It's when they become subjective to petitionsers that change the thought-through growth plans. As mentioned, perhaps through citizen engagement, volunteer accountability groups can be formed in each of the districts. These groups can mentor and help the local council person to enact those standards, staying accountable to the citizens and making city staff responsible.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
So as I mentioned, I work in banking. On a daily basis, I'm handling hundreds of millions of dollars in transactions. I have client relationships that go back 15 years with people that I would trust to watch my own kids. But even with that level of trust and that level of experience, each day, every single transaction is checked by dozens of fraud and guard systems and procedures. Every month, there are compliance reports that are done, an evaluation done by auditors and compliance people. Those reports are forwarded to executive managements for review. I have communication constantly and repeatedly with my clients. I'm face-to-face with them on a quarterly basis. And this is the only way we're able to do business, not with just trusting each other, but through a series of systems, of checks, that verify that all is being done according to the rules and the regulations. For our city, the same principles have to apply. We can't just assume or trust that everybody is going to be doing the right things for the right reasons, although I largely think that is the case in our city. There needs to be a better system of questions asked and evaluation established. I'm not accusing anyone of wrongdoing, but perhaps some of the longtime employees need to be held accountable for some of the past mistakes that have been made and possibly even replaced to ensure that our city is held to the highest ethical standards. One thing I have noticed is that no one from the city council attends the planning meetings. I think that needs to change. I think for too long, the city council has been willing to delegate some of their authority and responsibility to other groups without any oversight. I think that that same principle could be applied in community groups that could be organized to have representatives come to city council meetings or planning commission meetings, continue that oversight not only from government but from the citizens.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next question, and Kevin, you can take the lead on this one. I know that when I moved to Harriman seven and a half years ago, there was a master plan in place that provided for vibrant commercial development, particularly in and around the Harriman Town Center. Over the years, the city's primarily relied on residential building permits and impact fees for its revenue. Most agree, most would agree that this is not sustainable, and the strong commercial development that was once envisioned has not really fully materialized at this time. What would you do as a member of the council to bring in the commercial development and diversify our sources of revenue? Kevin?
This is a huge passion of mine. The building permits aren't, they're not sustainable. They're, it's too much of our income. You know, if you had to take away 30% of your income all of a sudden, we'd be in a lot of trouble. The economic growth from the commercial side has to be the way that we go after and get it. Now, as a college coach, if you needed to go get something, you go get something. You go recruit them, and that's something that I would like to see happen. You know, I think that with the planning committee especially, you know, they got some great training last week. As they continue to get trained, they continue to get direction, we need to look at rezoning a lot of this residential stuff and put it to more commercial use. We know that 80% of the jobs are on the east side of the freeway. That's too much. And until we fix some of that, it's always going to be 8 o'clock traffic going one way, 5 o'clock traffic going the other way. So we have to build the jobs. We have to build the retail. We have to build the economic paralysis that we need in our city to sustain those things. It's a little bit like driving a manual, and a lot of people my age don't know how to drive manuals, but there has to be this shift and change. The force that we've been putting behind our residential development has to be switched to a commercial development. We have to go out and get the businesses that we need. We need to recruit these businesses to come in here. We know that Utah is the number, has the number-one job growth in the nation. If employers want to come here, they want to come here because the cost of living is good. They want to come here because the quality of life is good. We, as a city, for too long, we've let Riverton and South Jordan build under our noses things that take money out of our own city's pockets. That's got to stop. We need that help to have those businesses that we can put our money into, to help us grow and stop relying on residential growth.
Thank you. Darrell?
Well, I think it's too easy just to say we need more commerce. We need more business. That's not a well-thought-through approach to sustainable growth and additional revenue. You're kind of putting the cart before the horse. There's a few things that happen with any city prior to that growth. The master planning's a wonderful thing, but first, make sure your master plan is coupled with a well-thought-through zoning and proper codes that match your vision of future Harriman. What do you want Harriman to look like? That directs the type of commerce, the type of business that comes through. So you come up first with this vision, this plan, and this has to be made known to the city council, to the mayor, to the city managers, to the city staff, that we, as citizens, want our Harriman to look like this. They're not mind readers. We need to engage as citizens and let them know. The second thing you do is businesses require access. Why would a business, a commercial development relocate or locate in Harriman if they don't have access to their clients via transportation, whether that's tracks, or bus routes, or road improvements, new roads? You have to provide access to encourage those businesses to come in. And the third thing to do is understand your existing, and we'll call it the utility infrastructure. Once again, is it suitable? Is it, does it have the volumes and capacity for new and enhanced business? And we can marry our future vision of Harriman with our future likings of commerce and business together to develop an incredible city. That's what needs to happen first, is those three things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Steve?
So let's quantify this budget problem. Last year, building permits and impact fees were 44% of the city's budget. Little better for the coming year, it's going to be about 31%. But still, when a third of your budget is coming from one-time fees, it's a disaster in the making. When those permits fees go away, there's only going to be two options: raise taxes is one, or the second and more responsible thing is to replace that with a sustainable source of income: taxes on retail businesses. I think that there's been a, I think we need to change the thinking, is the way I would say it. The narrative from the city for a long time has been, kind of like what Darrell said, you have to build the infrastructure. You have to have the population base. You have to build all the roads, and then you can have all the business. Well, it didn't seem to stop Riverton from building a massive construction project 50 yards across from our city border. Somehow, this, these assumptions about the limitations we have are wrong, and they need to be changed. Our city is a growing, vibrant, wonderful, amazing place. We've got a master plan in place. We have zoning set aside for commercial. We're just not doing a good enough job at attracting the right businesses here. The opportunity is now. The population is huge. There's traffic coming out of our yin yangs. There's no reason any business would not want to be here and take advantage of all that's going on right now. I think that what we can do better is to reach out and engage with some of the economic development organizations that exist, from the state, county, and then do a better job at our city level. Reaching out to the organizations that are already working with businesses and sell what we have in Harriman and why it's so great.
Thank you, Steve. Heather?
All right, so I think that we all agree on this issue. We agree that relying on permits and impact fees are not sustainable. Recently, the city council approved the new auto mall that will run along Mountain View Corridor, and I applaud you guys for doing that. I believe that that was a good first step to bring in more sales tax revenue. However, this is just the beginning for Harriman. I am a big advocate for commercial development. If our citizens want to avoid higher taxes, then we must bring in more business to bring in sales tax revenue. Currently, Harriman is a victim of high retail leakage. Retail leakage occurs when residents travel outside of an area to purchase goods and services. The lack of retail centers and services result in residents traveling outside the area for basic services and therefore adding more traffic, losing sales tax, losing tax base for cities, and lowering the quality of life for our residents. I want to ensure that our residents have access to goods and basic services within our city. Our city's vision statement is Harriman City will continue to be a place to establish roots, create opportunity, embrace our heritage, protect diversity, and promote economic development. And while preserving the Harriman Phil, provide a safe and inviting place to live, work, and play. I want to ensure that we are living up to our vision and ensure that we can live, work, and play in Harriman.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, next question, and Darrell, you'll take the lead on this one. You're all familiar with the proposed Olympia Hills development. Question is, are you for or against the Olympia Hills development as it is currently proposed, and what is the reasoning for your position? If you're opposed to the development, what is your plan for stopping it?
Well, I wish I had about 10 more minutes to answer that, but let me take a stab. I'm not opposed to development, but unproven theories really don't match my conservative values. Whenever I hear a developer use words like, "This is something that no one's ever done before," "We're making a company town," "It'll be electronic scooters," things like that, I like to say cars are optional, I really get concerned. Harriman is not an experiment. We shouldn't be subject to our surrounding neighbors trying out their theories on the residents of Harriman. Again, I'm not opposed to development, but it has to be done smartly and well-thought-through. I understand the need for mixed use, for lower-income, densely-placed housing, but why all in one spot? How about islands scattered around the valley instead of just in one concentrated place? Daybreak's not the total success that the developer is referring to. I personally know families that drive their kids two blocks to the swimming pools, opposed to walking in Daybreak's walkable community. Shopping, everyone has a preference with dentists and doctors. Well, they leave the community to go to them. They need to drive, so that's just a myth spread by the developer. The key to that growth is to enact studies that will substantiate their claims, not just make the claim and try it out on us. So I know it's slowing things down and pushing it out in the future, but I'd rather have it well-thought-out and proven instead of just try it as a theory.
Thank you, Darrell. Steve?
So this is an easy question. Am I opposed to Olympia Hills? Most definitely. I was opposed to it the way it was proposed before. I'm opposed to it the way it's proposed now. But I have two really good reasons for that. First reason is density. Now, I want to get into the numbers about this just really quickly. They're talking about putting currently around 6,000 homes on supposedly around 900 acres. That works out to a little less than seven units per acre. That doesn't sound too completely unreasonable until you actually do the math and realize you got 150 acres that went away on Saturday to the University, or Utah State University for an agricultural center. You got to set 20% aside for green space. You got to set 20% aside for roads and infrastructure. So now, we're getting up to something like 6,000 homes on 450, 500 acres, which is more like 13 units an acre. Let's compare Harriman, for example. Harriman's about 20 square miles, maybe a little less than 13,000 total acres. We have right now, last count, a little over 13,000 units. That's one per acre. Even if you take out 20% for green space, 20% for roads, we're only about 1.6 per acre. you take out 20% for green space, 20% for roads, we're only about 1.6 per acre. They're talking about putting something eight times as dense as Harriman is right now on our back porch. Anybody think Harriman's already crowded? Anybody think we already have traffic problems? Let's put 30,000 more people out and see what happens. So that's the second reason, is the impact of putting that out there. Our traffic's already got failing intersections all over. You put more traffic without fixing it, it's just going to get worse. This idea that if we build it, they will come, then they'll fix the roads, then they'll fix, hoping and wishing is not a strategy. Specifically, though, the question was asked, how would I stop it? The truth is, is at a city council level, I can't. But with the involvement of the city council, the Southwest Regional Mayors, and the citizens, we can create a groundswell that can stop it.
Thank you. Heather?
Thanks for leaving this down for me. Let me start out by saying, I believe in the Constitution. The Fifth Amendment of the Constitution says, "Nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." So why am I reading you the Constitution? I believe in personal property rights. If Olympia Hills presents a plan that fits with zoning and ordinance, then it's illegal for anyone to deny the development. Do I want the Olympia Hills development to move forward as it stands? No, I do not. I believe that it will affect our city and surrounding cities in a negative way if it is to be built the way that they want it. Here's the bright side to this. Harriman City can choose not to allow the development to be annexed into the city. That's right. We could just flat-out say, "No." Our residents have spoken out against this development, and I stand by not allowing the annexation of Olympia Hills into Harriman as their development plans are now. Their vision is far from what Harriman's vision is. Last year, Harriman City spent $30,000 to help fund a study of the 930-acre property to determine what kind of density would be appropriate for the area's infrastructure. I hope that the results of this study could produce a proposal to the developer to find middle ground on the project. Again, I'm against the proposed Olympia Hills development as it stands now.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I agree with everything that was said. I'm against it as well. I think that there are property rights that could be considered, and the Fifth Amendment is incredibly important, but it's bad timing. I understand that the county has their responsibilities. I think the larger issue is, how are we going to build the network and really network with our neighbors to be able to create a feasible solution? Yes, we could say, "No, we're not going to annex it." I think more importantly, we have to start learning how to play our cards to be able to get things to work for our benefit. Yeah, I don't want the traffic, I don't want the density. I think that it needs to be more commercially-based. It's nice that there's going to be a school out there to help, but we know some of these projects are coming from U-Dub. We know it's going to take way too much time. We know Mountain View Corridor is going to expand, but it's going to take time. We know that the prison's coming, we know the airport's coming, we've got all these other projects. It's just going to slow construction down. So we have to take our time, really think it out, make sure that it's the right choice for right now. And I think that it should be...I think the study's very important to look at, but I think that where it stands now, it's not appropriate for what we need as a county and definitely what we need as a city.
Thank you. Kevin mentioned working with our neighbors, and I want to do a follow-up question and give you each one minute to address this. How would you engage with leaders of other South Valley communities and perhaps even other organizations to address concerns with Olympia Hills? And, well, Daryl sent you lead off with the first one. We'll let you lead off with the follow-up.
I believe a lot of those checks and balances, that process is already in place. Local governments, being the cities that surround Harriman and Harriman, already discuss issues. They all have their own agendas, and we need to protect our interests. But open dialogue is a big factor, as well as factoring in Salt Lake County and their obligations. All governments, they're chartered to do a particular task under a particular set of rules. We have to abide by those tasks. We have to communicate together, and we have to negotiate. As you know, if anything is parents, that life's a negotiation, and we have to do that. There are regional councils that are already in place that discuss the transportation needs and intermodal opportunities and that type of opportunity. So that all needs to be discussed.
Thank you. Steve?
So in the original question, you asked what inspired us to run, what got us into the race. And it was really a year ago when I was surprised that Olympia Hills was happening in our backyard, and I didn't know anything about it. It was that event that really changed my perspective from a passive to an active. I've been writing articles and publishing things in social media, being involved in some of the community groups that are going on. I mean, just next Monday night, I'm going to be helping to organize a group in South Jordan to educate them about what's going on in Olympia Hills and how they as citizens can help educate their government about what their needs are. Truly, this is not something that can be done at just a city government level. It's something that we all have to take a responsibility of and communicate to the county government that we're opposed to this and why. Not just because we're angry about the traffic, but have legitimate reasons.
Thank you. Heather?
So I think the first rule in business is you have to be able to communicate, especially with the people that are not only living in areas surrounding us, but they're all living and working there. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page about these developments, because it's going to affect all of us in the same, pretty much the same capacity. I think that we need the right leaders to be able to step up and be able to negotiate with the developer, and I think that we need to be clear with the developer what's in line with our values and what the citizens of Harriman want.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, a couple books I think of, when I think of what we need to do, I think of, you know, How to Win Friends and Influence People by Dale Carnegie. I think of The Art of War. I think of these books that really inspire us to network and build relationships. You know, we don't have some of the access to the freeways and some of these other roads like these other cities do. So we have to play from a little bit of a disadvantage, but we've got to play chess when everybody else is playing checkers. We've got to start by building these relationships and learning what our constituents need so that we can start playing back and forth. Because if we just try to pony up and just negotiate with them, we don't have a lot of negotiation from strength. Same thing with Olympia Hills. We don't have a lot of negotiation from a strength power. We have to play our cards differently, learn how to build those relationships so that we can work with each other better.
Thank you. Okay, thus far, we've talked about questions regarding the city as a whole. Now let's focus in on our district. Do you see any particular challenges? Is there a particular challenge that affects the citizens of District Four specifically, and how would you address that challenge? Steve, go ahead.
So District Four is a bit of a unique district in the city. We cover all the way from here at the Cove over to Port of Rockwell at the point of the mountain at Camp Williams. We've got people that have lived here for 15 years or more with people that just moved in last week. We've got great big homes on great big lots, and we've got lots of tiny houses in high-density areas. There are divisions in our community. There are factions that almost are in opposition to each other, and it's really kind of tearing at the underbelly of what makes Harriman so great. I think if you're asking me to articulate what our biggest challenge is, it's community. It's trying to figure out how we're going to build a vibrant community, how we're going to fix these budget problems, how we're going to deal with transportation, how we're going to beat Olympia Hills, but how we're going to do that as a community. How are we going to figure out a way to bridge between the old-timers and the newcomers, and the big houses and the little houses, and the higher incomes and the lower incomes? That's really the challenge. My answer to that is really doing the same things that are good for the city are going to be good for our district. It's about making sure that there's amenities that increase the quality of life out here. It's about bringing in quality businesses, unique retail shops, great restaurants, landmark type of things that people want to come and stay and be here, where people from the big houses and the little houses are going to have a chance to meet, are going to have a chance to interact, where we can build a sense of community and keep Harriman what's great about being Harriman.
Thank you, Steve. Heather?
All right. So in my opinion, the greatest challenge affecting the citizens of District Four specifically is an absence of feeling represented. I'd like to see the new fourth district city council member attend our community events, attend all of the city council meetings, and be more present in our city. It's important to me to feel like I'm being heard. I would like to see someone like me, who has the time and is willing to fully commit to the city and the position. As elected officials, our residents count on us to represent them. If we're not present, we don't know what they want. If I'm elected, I'll be at the community events, I'll be at the city council meetings, I'll hold open houses and get to know the true issues that are facing our district, because I care about Harriman, and I care about all of you.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I concur and I concur. I think that, you know, our founding fathers didn't do what they did for them. They did it for what they were leaving behind, that legacy. I think the biggest issue that we have is that we need to engage with our youth and engage with our community and leave them something that's better than what we founded. You know, there's three guiding principles that me and my kids talk about. First, it's being the right person at the right time. The second is, what are you going to do to leave a legacy? What are you going to do to make sure that you're taking care of the next up? And the third is, leave things better than you founded. Yeah, we've got all these issues, but we've got a lot more opportunities than we've got issues. We've got brilliant minds, we've got smart people. I mean, Harriman's happening and is full of would-be geniuses. But for us, it's got to be, what are we going to leave behind? That's engagement with our kids. You know, as we know that the number-one killer of our young people is suicide. What are we going to do to be positive role models to them? Let's get involved in the schools. Let's strengthen our teachers. Kids have a powerful response when somebody that doesn't have to care about them cares about them. And I think that that's probably the most important thing that we could do for our going forward.
Thank you. Daryl?
District Four is a wonderful and a great place. The question becomes, how do we preserve that wonderful atmosphere and culture that we share here in District Four? I think the biggest danger we face is outside influences with development throughout the remainder of the city and outside of our city. That overburdens the enjoyments that we have here in District Four, the recreational opportunities, the roads, the trails, the parks. My colleagues didn't mention a District Four golf course, but that would be nice. The needs that I see truly, and I know I've said this a number of times, is better transportation and well-thought-through infrastructure, improvements on that for District Four. I think we have everything. We could use the restaurants, the retail, well-planned commerce, additional recreation. We've been approached by specialist groups that want UTV trails here in Harriman that interlink local communities. That'd be kind of a fun thing to have. There is a need for lower-income communities. District Four should shoulder our share, but not to the detriment of the culture and the enjoyment that we have now. It needs to be incorporated in. And then the wrong type of commerce and business is simply a bad negative. Growth for the sake of growth is not good. Well-planned, sustainable growth is what will make District Four and all of Harriman a wonderful place. Thanks.
Thank you, Daryl. Hey, I do have one additional question that I'd like to ask the candidates before we open it up to audience questions, and Heather, we'll let you go first on this one. David Watts, who was elected mayor in 2017 and whose term technically doesn't expire for over two years, was removed from power and stripped of most official duties due to ethics issues, but he still maintains a degree of involvement in the city government. What, if any, role do you think Mr. Watts should have in the city government through the end of his term, and what actions would you personally take to make that happen? Heather?
I think that the whole situation with Mayor Watts was very unfortunate. I think it was something that could have been resolved. I think that his name has been tarnished, and I think that that represents poorly on Harriman. I wish he would have taken the opportunity to really rebuild the trust in the community. I know that the city council made the decision to strip him of his obligations, but I think that what they did was appropriate. But I think that working with him in a capacity that he still is our mayor, and there's not much we can really do with that. He's an elected official. I think that we still need to be respectful that he is our mayor and really just work with him and be respectful of others and make sure that we're treating others how we want to be treated.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I think that the sentence has been passed and justice has been put out there. I don't think that there's...I'm always somebody that's going to yield in the favor of kindness. Based off of where we're at now, I don't think there's any legal precedence that we could do a lot more with it unless there was other things that would come to fruition or come to light. But the office is definitely an important office and should be respected as such, and if there's disregard for the office, then actions need to be taken. If, again, but we also are a country of second chances and penance, and if he's paid his penance, and that's not for me to decide yet, that's already been decided, but I think that's where things need to be unless there's more to come to light.
Thank you. Daryl?
It is truly unfortunate that things like this happen, not only in Harriman, but on the federal scene as well as on local government scenes. The mayor was in the wrong, but he has been sanctioned, and I think that sanction was appropriate. He's an elected official, therefore he's due the respect of those that voted him in. I think sanctioning beyond this point borders on punishment, and my core values and my core belief is in forgiveness. And I think that he's learned his lessons and will serve out the rest of his term well, representing Harriman. The damage has been done. Trust and growth needs to occur, but all of us need to be mindful of which one of us haven't fallen into a trap of misunderstanding or outright doing something incorrect or unethical. You too would want to be forgiven. I think that rebuilding trust in the city is paramount. It really is. And city council is really where it happens at local government levels. It's important to bring on those that are qualified and those that are patient and understanding and well-measured to contemplate and to implement strategies that help Harriman beyond just maintenance. That requires experience and some degree of know-how. I feel that I'm qualified in both arenas, having worked with at multiple levels in city and federal, state governments. and federal, state governments. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Steve?
So my grandfather was an Oklahoma farm boy, and spending a few years in the South, sometimes speak a little uncouth, so you forgive me if I say not only no, but hell no. The mayor embarrassed our city, not because it was $1,200 or $1,300, but it was his conduct around $1,200 or $1,300. This could have been solved behind closed doors, without any impact on the city, the city council, his ability to function of any kind, but it was his own pride that got in the way of the city's needs first. If you listen to what was being said when the action was originally taken, it wasn't just because of $1,200 or $1,300 bucks, it was because of his conduct in many other ways, and in relation to the $1,300. I don't see a path forward for the mayor's powers to be reinstated. He can't be removed unless he's convicted of a felony, but at this point, I think there should be further action to take to reduce his salary even further, because he is really doing nothing in his role, and I don't think he should be allowed to return to that. In fact, I think he should be encouraged to resign, and he should be replaced.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of you speaking up on that rather sensitive subject with little preparation. Thank you. We have just a few moments left. I'd like to turn over some time to the audience for any questions. I would ask you to speak up and to let us know whether your question is directed at a particular candidate or all of them. Yes?
With tracks, and I know that they have plans to come possibly to a couple of different places. I know one of the places to come up for the new high school is. I live in that neighborhood, and we are very against it. Whether there's a spot somewhere else they could put it, I know they own a property that runs up it, but the problem is, is you have high school kids that don't always think clearly that we'll be driving in that section with little kids that will have to bus from my neighborhood over to the new elementary school and we're a block from there. So what would you guys do to change that?
Okay, let's give each of you one minute on that. Heather, you're about to stand up, why don't you go ahead?
All right, so that's a very valid concern, is the safety of our families and our children, especially the high school students. I think that UTA has put in a lot of work, and it goes with our master plan in putting in the tracks line in that area, and it really makes sense for Harriman to have our tracks line over there. I know that they will have certain safety measures that they will take to ensure that our high school kids and our children aren't running out in front of them or driving out in front of them. And I'm confident that UTA will accomplish that and make that safe for our community.
Thank you. Kevin?
This is where the city council direction to the planning commission is so important, is to make sure that our ordinances really line up so that we don't leave it to happen sans, that we're going to distrust UTA. Yeah, they're going to do a good job, but it's our backyard, so that our ordinances need to be in place, our city council needs to give direction to the planning commission to make sure that our ordinances really line up with the safety procedures that we feel comfortable with. We need tracks, we're going to need that to alleviate a lot of our congestion, there's really not going to be a whole lot of other ways to do that, but we've got to control the safety of our kids first, not leave it to somebody else to do.
Thank you. Daryl?
Light rail is part of transportation, it's part of what a community needs to encourage the commerce, the business to come in. You have to have a means of getting in and out of a city. Light rail is part of that. Safety concerns, however, are paramount to many of these transportation issues, whether it's a railroad or whether it's a highway. There are mitigating technologies that can encourage safety, both from the construction side via UTA, as well as through the city side, through pedestrian bridges, through different kind of lighted crosswalks. There's ways to mitigate that. Bottom line, safety is paramount, but tracks is needed also.
Thank you. Steve?
So let me ask you a direct question, because I think there's a lot I could expound on tracks. First of all, I'm not going to pull any punches, I think putting tracks right down the middle of a residential street is idiotic. It is the only place where there's going to be a track station in the middle of a neighborhood, right next to a high school. It's beyond bizarre, it shouldn't be there. A master plan is one thing, having specific contracts and agreements in place is something different. It needs to be somewhere else. I'm not even convinced that we actually need a tracks line into the city very far. We don't even have buses right now. Before we start talking about tracks lines and all the expenditures for that, how about we fix the intersections at 134th? How about we finish Bangor Highway? I mean, they started that 20 years ago, now they're going to have to tear it up and redo it? Why don't we start making plans that get us ahead of the transportation problems instead of having to try and catch up to them? So yes, safety is a big issue, there shouldn't be a train in there.
Can I move out just one second to these guys?
Sure.
I don't know if you guys realize, but they planned just to put walls up for the high school kids. So if you haven't seen the plan, we've spoken with them, and that's all their plans. And like, a wall to stop like the sound, and like, that just cuts the sight off. So that's not, I really like your idea, but I think if they stopped it at maybe the new Mountain View Village, and then had buses or something that went up to the new colleges and stuff that they planned, that's a good thing. So maybe put that in your plans, and if you guys are thinking, ahead.
Thank you. Question over there? This will be our last question for this evening.
So, our current situation through our past several candidates for mayor, for city council members with time amendments and opportunities to serve, have you thought about their employment and their employment situation is changing through the number of years they're on service? What is your current employment, and how do you see that changing in the next four years of your term, or if you see it changing, and how do you allocate your time and interest to the city?
Thank you. Kevin, let's start with you.
So, I'm in real estate, so according to a lot of people, I don't work anyway, but I put together a team that will help alleviate a lot of the time. I'm not going anywhere, I'll be here.
Daryl?
I promised myself I wasn't going to say this, but to quote Ronald Reagan, "I won't let my opponent's youth get in the way of my age." I'm at the end of my career. I hope to be slowing down, which is part of my motivation to plug into the city as a city councilman. I have a heart for District Four, I love this city, I want to fully engage and participate with all my past experiences and skills. I can apply that to the city and to being a full-time committed councilman.
Thank you. Steve?
So I've worked in my basically current position for the past 15 years. I did make a lateral switch to another company about two years ago. I do travel on occasion for my work, usually only a day or two at a time, and I have a lot of flexibility around that. I do work out of my home, because my company is based in Kentucky, so I'm in my basement most days, working on the computer. I have no intention of leaving, I have no intention of making a move, this is my career, this is what I do, this is what I'm good at. It gives me a lot of flexibility with my family, to go on field trips with kids and school activities, and take my wife out to lunch and things like that, but I think it also gives me the flexibility to meet the needs of the city when they need to be met.
Thank you. Heather?
All right, so I work in healthcare administration management, and I work a typical nine-to-five, which really leaves me a lot of time to be able to dedicate the extra time that I have to my obligations to the city. I enjoy being busy. When I'm committed to something, I am committed, and I can do anything if I want to. If I want to be at that meeting, I'm going to be at that meeting, but the biggest thing that I want all of you to take away from this is, we need somebody who's going to show up to the meetings. We need somebody who's going to represent District Four, and that's me.
Thank you very much. Well, that brings us to a close. We'd like to thank Steve, Heather, Kevin, and Daryl for their time tonight and for their willingness to serve. Let's give them all a round of applause. And just a couple of other thank-yous as well. Thank you to Denise Christensen for allowing us to set up here in this venue tonight, and for Doran Barton for providing audio and video. Doran indicates that the proceedings will be uploaded to YouTube for our fellow citizens to view in a little while. That concludes our evening. Please feel free to mingle and get to know your candidates a little bit more. Thank you.
[applause]